All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wellington Board of Education's special meeting. It is Thursday, October 10th at 2022, 2024. And of course, we're calling our meeting order at 7:03 PM. I am Brianna Ross, the board chair. Just wanted to welcome everyone in person and Zoom, and those of you watching our recording. We have some Board of Education members here this evening in person. Samantha Sperry and Tracy Anderson, John Mitchell, Robert Christensen, and Roger Gavill. And we might have Jen. Do we have Jen online?
She's not on yet.
Anyway, so we're here and so glad to see you all and welcome your participation. We have a really big task ahead of us regarding how we're going to care for our school buildings. We know the where. We can answer that question, where. Where do we need to focus? We need to focus on our schools. But we have a lot of other big questions like what to do, when, with who, and how. So we're in quite a game here trying to figure out all of those answers. And we need your help. So thank you for coming and your participation is necessary, welcome, and needed. So, thank you. We have--
One second. So let me do the nuts and bolts.
Sure, thanks.
So the idea tonight is to get through the full presentation. And I'll introduce Rusty in a second. What we'll do is, once we get through the full presentation, it'll move into the next part of the agenda, which is the Q and A. It will be back and forth, online. We'll answer any questions we can. And I think that's mainly Rusty because he's the expert here. I do have this meeting locked down just to, so we can get a good recording. Meaning, cameras are off. You can't start your cameras. You can raise your hand all you want, but we're going to wait till we open up questions. The chat function's off, things like that. If you have a question in the room, there are handouts over there. And there are also pencils and note cards if you want to make a-- write down a question. And we'll put Samantha Sperry in charge of just collection. If you want to ask it, hang on to it till the end. If you don't want to ask it, give it to Samantha. And once you get your-- if you get any, I'll come and get them from you. You can go back through. Okay? All right, so welcome Rusty Malik. Rusty is the primary, we'll call you, for QA and M architecture. The Board had voted to create a facility study to get new numbers and go through the process to make sure what we can submit as a Board to CIP was a good plan and would give people options. That was filed in the bail referendum for the new school for pre-K through eight. There are some numbers in here about a new pre-K to eight, just as a comparison. Help move through all those things. This presentation will be-- I think we'll have a minor change that we talked about tonight. That'll be fixed probably tomorrow. And we'll have the full presentation and recording online for all community members tomorrow. Okay? So that's kind of the nuts and bolts. So without further ado, I'm just going to get the share screen here for Rusty and set him. We don't need recorded. There you go.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rusty Malik. And just a little bit of background. I've been doing these schools in Connecticut for the last 34 years and primarily public schools, K through 12. So I have a lot of experience working with the state and developing aspects and putting concept designs together. I was involved a little bit in the first project with the new facility. So I have some background on what was done back then. And this particular study and presentation is really about what do we do next? So what we felt is--
Is it on? I'm going to turn it on then because it's not on. We weren't sure. Try now.
Is that better?
You might have pulled closer.
Pulled closer, too. So this particular option we're doing is we are developing-- we developed a CIP plan in terms of all the different items that needed to be addressed in the schools. And we go through a process of how we developed that and what that meant, how we would want to implement it. And there was feedback from the Board as well in terms of how we prioritize and get the work done. Because both these schools are occupied and anything that you do would need to be done while the students are in school. So that's just an overview of where we are and what we're going to present. So we're going to start, again, what you're dealing with Center School and Hall School. We're all moving the sites. And the idea was to visit the sites and confirm some of the findings that had been presented by Iran during the various studies. And there've been several studies that have been done on these buildings and identifying some of the key concerns, sort of their code related, fire code, ADA, or building code. And then also some based on educational needs as well. But the focus was really on the codes and the conditions of the buildings. For instance, you know, when I say conditions, how old are the systems and how functional are they? Are they at the end of their useful life? Or have they exceeded their useful life? Are they based, you know-- or have they been replaced? Are they in good condition? So we tried to look at all of those aspects of each of the buildings. At the same time-- at the same time, we were also looking at the state reimbursement. Because we do-- any work that we do, we want to try to take advantage of the state reimbursement and maximize that. And so what this is-- that's one of our priorities, to look at how can we do projects but make sure that they are reimbursable? To give you an idea of what that means is-- the state does not repair-- you know, reimburse for repairs and those types of-- but they focus on our specific types of projects. And this-- the screen is identifying those types of projects. Like a roof replacement project. That's-- that can be a small standard loan project. And we see that all the time. Or their energy update projects. Or their window replacement project. Or you can do a code project. So these are all different types of projects. So when you start looking at a building and you want to do several smaller projects, if we want to guess how we want to proceed, we try to identify which ones would qualify for state reimbursement and focus on those. But at the same time, we have-- we need to understand what the shortcomings of the building are and can we-- and what needs to be addressed. So that was one of the charges here. And we focused on that to maximize reimbursement for the projects and the work that would be done. We also identified what the state reimbursement is. There are things called the space standards, which identify how large a building would be. And that works in a way that-- it's based on enrollment. So the enrollment drives the site-- the square footage of the building. We have to understand that and look at it in terms of-- if the building is larger than what's called the space standards, then some of that becomes ineligible for reimbursement or your rates drop. So these are sort of technical aspects of how you consider reimbursement. But these are items that we evaluate all the way through the study as we look at each component of the study. Our goal is to break it down and get into site utilities. And I'm not going to go through every one of these items because it could be here for a couple of days. But the big picture of the categories of site utilities inside of we looked at ADA, conditions, lighting, security, all those things. On the building, we looked at the building unload, such as what's the roof condition? What's the-- what are the windows? What are the walls? How does it form in terms of energy standards? How does-- is it a healthy building? Are the systems such that it allows us to maintain a healthy building? Because we all know, healthy buildings are extremely important. And these are all requirements within the state for school facilities in terms of how the school should be maintained. We looked at the interiors of the building. And in the interiors, we looked at things, especially ADA. Can the building ADA can keep compliant? How does it work? What are the conditions of the case where-- for instance, there are some areas where the cabinetry is original to the building. These buildings are-- AD was the last renovation. So to think of it, that was 244 years ago. So how does-- what are the conditions of those-- the interiors of the building? Is there hazmat in the building in terms of PCDs? In terms of asbestos? Not just the tile, but also the mastic underneath the tile? And how does that impact any work that we do? So we looked at that as well. From an accessibility point of view, we look at what do the exits look like? I mean, are they accessible to people and individuals in wheelchairs? Is the building internally accessible in terms of the vinyd elevators? Are all the program spaces available to somebody who's disabled in a wheelchair without having to go-- in the case of Center School-- or in some way you have to go outside the building to come back in to go from one level to the other? Those are some significant concerns. And then we also looked at the building systems in terms of mechanical systems, the heating, cooling, ventilation. Whether the buildings are strengthless. Right now, schools are required to be strengthless. And our schools are not strengthless. So that poses a problem as well. So these are not insignificant issues, but they're issues that need to be blessed. And the question becomes, how do we address them in a capital improvement project from that perspective? So we put together a list of items that need to be done. But in order to make some big bunch of decisions and to understand what are the priorities-- one of the priorities are-- I'd say is the items that was-- the fourth was, we should be addressing the fire protection system. We should be addressing the HVAC, electrical, replacing the roof, the building interiors, certain things. And then some work impacts other aspects of the building. For instance, if you're putting a new strengthless system in the building, you have to address, well, what do we do with the ceilings? Because the pipes and everything have to go in to the building. So then you have to now replace the building, the ceilings, and those areas. So we want it to make it so it's a comprehensive-- anything you do is a comprehensive project. When you do smaller projects, what happens is you want to make sure that you don't do some work. And then when you come to do the next project, you're undoing it because the other work now that's necessary has to modify what's already been done. So those considerations from where-- those items were considered in this process. And then we also did the same thing with the site in terms of how do we look at the site? And as I said, we mentioned earlier, and the phasing. If you do work, what is-- how do we phase that work on the site? Constructibility and site logistics. These are all considerations in this process as we evaluate the different aspects of the building and site. So we've got a few items that we've identified here. And they're just big picture items. The list is-- some of the things we identified was unit ventilators, for instance. We've got unit ventilators. They're not in good condition. But beyond that, there's some acoustical issues with those. And unit ventilators tend to be noisy. So when you're in classroom, there are acoustical standards that the state has. And you have to meet those acoustical standards. If you don't meet those standards, you know, you're-- you're not going to get money from the state to renovate those spaces and to do the work that's necessary. So we have to look at that. And in general, it's an impediment. It's a problem for teaching. Because what ends up happening is the teachers are competing over the noise of the hearing ventilator to provide instruction. So these are basic issues. We look at the kitchen. And in this case, we're looking at Center School. It doesn't need ADA requirements. It's a very small space. It's very tight. There's not high-putt space from a health perspective as well. Some of the bigger issues, again, the accessibility, the fact that you have two levels and one level is not accessible from the other. So you need an internal elevator in this building to address that. The conditions of the windows. Some of these windows are original to the building. There's potentially a PCD clock based on the age of the windows. That is a safe assumption to make. We did not test because you don't want to test. And if you test, then you're obligated to remove it. So at this point, we're making the assumption that-- based on history and based on our experience-- that that clock is a PCD clock. And the windows are also single-painted. So they're extremely inefficient. You're losing energy there. There's also other issues with the operability of the windows. So these are some of the issues that we're looking at. Just access to the building from the exterior, accessible clock. And getting from the parking lot to the north parking lot, for instance, at Center School, that's more or less crowded. It's getting to the school from there. It's in a, you can't. There's steps, there's no ramp, and so on. We looked at that. We look at security. How secure is the building in terms of-- do we have a secure vestibule at the minimum? I know we have cameras and certain things. But typically, we have to have a secure vestibule. So when somebody comes into the building, they're allowed into the vestibule. It's called a man trap at that point. They're deadened at that point. They're allowed into the administrative office before they go out into the rest of the school. So those are standard procedures now that need to be implemented in these schools. We don't have that something that needs to be done. There are other items, such as-- and so on. We won't go into every one of those items. But this is just to give you an idea of the extent of work that needs to happen in these buildings. We did take each of these items and develop a cost associated with it. Now, when you look at those individual costs, what happens is those are just costs in terms of-- this is an estimate for what that item would take. The next question is, how do you do that work? How do you implement it in a building that is going to be occupied? So I presented early on a sort of a base case, which was at HVAC roofing, you know, systems within the building. But we also wanted to maximize state reimbursement. So we took a look at a way of approaching the building that would be sort of a big picture, all inclusive, that would try to renovate these buildings and address all these issues. And these buildings would be occupied. So a question that was raised, well, how do you do this? How do you phase this while the students are in this building? And that was an interesting question because we're taking some significant areas and renovating them to meet all these criteria that we've identified, like the windows, the ceilings, the roof, and so on. Mechanical systems in particular. So in order to put a cost to this, we took one scenario and we said, okay, if we renovate this building, let's develop a phasing plan because that gives us a way of implementing the road techniques to be done. So this phasing plan was developed. And the idea of this phasing plan, it starts at Center. So we've got both schools. We're going to do these renovations at both the schools. So we start at Center. And the idea is this approach. And there can be other approaches, too. But this is one that we looked at that addressed all the issues. We said, okay, we're going to move the third and fourth grades out and put them in at Hall-Moorehead School. That way, that will free up space in the building, as we call it, swing space. So we can renovate the building. And the school will still be occupied, but we have portions of it that we can then renovate. And that's what you're seeing. So this image here-- you can see the salmon color here is area that we'd be renovating while the rest of the school is occupied and operating. So that would be the start of the project. The next step is-- would be, once that work is completed, then you occupy that space and you renovate this section here. So it's a methodical approach to how we would go through and implement the changes that need to be made, the improvements that need to be made. I want to say one thing, that this is not addressing education things. So if we needed more classrooms or you needed a larger classroom, et cetera, this is purely saying, we're going to fix the things that need to be fixed in this process. But we've got a methodical way of doing it. So the phase two, we renovated here. And by the way, at this time, you know, Hall is just sitting there. It's-- the only work is being done at Center School. And this is because you just needed swing space and you couldn't renovate both the schools at the same time. Once you renovate and complete the phase two, then you can see-- so the blue colors sort of signifies areas that have been renovated. And the next step of construction is the salmon color. So we worked our way through this over time. And you can see with each phase is a time frame associated with it in terms of how long it takes to renovate that space. And then, once that's all completed, we have a duration. Now, this is important because when you're constructing and you're budgeting and you're doing projects, you need to know what your schedule is. And that also tells us when can the work start and when can work-- when does the work be completed? The scenario that we selected in this phase is that the earliest this work would start in 2026. And what we're saying is, let's say that it's kind of approved the project and we filed an application with the state in June of 2025. That's saying it's going to be a larger than just a roof project. It's going to be one of the priority projects. Then we start and file an application in 2025. It's approved in 2026. And once it's approved, we start construction. So there-- there's an overlap there in 2026. And therefore, when you saw each of the phases, there's a date associated with it. Now, you could say, well, you might have started earlier. But the problem is, you have to go through the application process. And that's every June 31st. And that'd be state accepts those applications.
Please pause one second. One item I want people to make sure they understand on the maps is when fourth grade is not in the building here during this work. Fourth grade is at Hall School. Where you see the salmon colors and there's a grade level in there, that's what we would propose as their future grade level. So when you see kindergarten multiple times, it's because that's where their proposed space would be, not because there's six kindergarten classes or five year olds.
And one of the things you want to always try to achieve, because this process is quite disruptive, is to make the transition-- have the students make the transition once, if you can. So that would be the goal. So if you notice, you know, that the North Wing, we-- when we moved the kindergartners and first graders in there, that would be their permanent home. So they moved once and now they're in that space. And that's where they would be for the rest of the project. So as we move through this process, you know, we look at the end of it all and we've completed the work. Now we're looking at, in this case, for phase four from-- that's ending in August of 2028. This approach is also-- piggyback with what's happening on the site. So we also looked at how the site would work and how the site phasing would first. Obviously, when they're doing the renovation on the north side of the building, we've tried to do the north side parking lot then. And that would have done at the same time, too. And the same is true with the septic system. The complication is always, how do you transition your mechanical systems? Because you have a boiler room and a chemical room with all the systems connected to it. So that work is continuing through all the phases. So as an area is completed, it's now operational and it's working with the new mechanical systems. So that becomes a little bit more difficult because you need to add temporary space-- temporary hookups for existing space and a hookup for the new spaces. So that's-- this type of work in terms of phase work does result in sort of temporary conditions as well that add cost to the project. So phasing and temporary conditions, this is all part of the big picture of how you improve a building while it's occupied. We took the same approach for Hall as well. And, you know, we looked at the site conditions there. What are we doing with the constructibility? How do we-- how do we address different areas of the site? And looked at, you know, what are some of the key elements there as well? Some of the areas of concern at Hall had to do with, again, accessibility, things like area refuge. There's some areas where there's moisture and concerns with moisture. The HVAC system as a whole needed a lot of work. The fact that natural light is one of the things that's lacking, in the cafeteria, kitchen space. We needed to address some of those issues as well. And then just access throughout the building and then the building systems. So in order to do-- to address the conditions at Hall, now what we looked at is reversing and saying, some of the students from Hall will go back to Center School. And that way, it'll give us more room at Hall. Now, keep in mind, this is-- this approach of occupied building renovation, and we're trying not to bring in portable. So we'll talk a little bit later about portable spaces, portable classrooms, because we looked at that as well. But in this case, what we're saying is, before we start the renovation to Hall, we've completed the renovations at Center. And by doing that, we're now going to use some of the rooms at Center. And it may require things like, you know, some-- then they have to be a classroom in the media center. Then the art. Art might have to be on the card for a shorter time while some of this work is done at Hall. So by moving those students out of Hall and into-- into Center School, especially in this case, the fifth grade, we're now able to start looking at how do we renovate Hall. And you can see from on the screen, phase one is this upper level. So we can take that. We're able to-- as we develop these phasing plans, we have to make sure that at all times, exiting and safety is the number one priority for the school. So we can't create a layout or a plan and renovate spaces that impedes that aspect of code and safety. The students have to be able to get out of the building in case of an emergency, to maintain security in the building. We have to make sure that the building systems are functioning and all the normal needs in a school are met. So as we look at this, we carve out sections of the building and say, this works. And therefore, the rest of the space can be occupied and by the students. So in this case, phase one is right here. And we're seeing that in the salmon color. And you'll see some of it down here, for instance, the mechanical space. But that you'll see because that work will be ongoing throughout. Some of the things that you typically will see in a school that's being renovated is that the ceilings will be open. And that's because they'll be running, you know, mechanical pipe. They'll be running pipes and strengthless systems, et cetera, in the ceilings. And they can't open and close them all the time. So we do meet with the local officials at that time to make sure that the approach is one that's acceptable to them and it's safe for students to be in that school while construction is underway. Most of the time, what we try to do is isolate the construction areas so there's no overlap between the students, teachers, and the construction workers. And there's direct access from the outside to those areas that are being renovated. That's important. So in order to do that, what we find that in some cases, you just-- there are areas that you don't have access to. The choices are the contractors will accept the shift or we target those spaces for summer construction. So, you know, that gets factored into these various phasing plans. As you can see, this-- in this approach, oh, now the upper level is included or has been renovated. And now we've selected other areas of the building that are phase two. And we worked our way through the building by renovating and completing and then moving to the next phase and renovating all the way through. What I want to point out at this point is that the last phase, as they're completing, we're in August of 2030. So this is a-- this process is slow, it's very methodical, but it takes a long time to do as we go through this. Concurrently, we're-- we'll be looking at the site. Concurrently, we're, you know, we'll be looking at the site and the same issues. Site logistics, making sure that key items that are on the site are broken out in a way that it corresponds to the building renovation that's going on and the overall improvements. So as you complete an area of the building, you're also completing the associated site areas that those renovations must include. And at the end of, at that point, we've all, the entire building and site are renovated and completed. So that's one approach to renovating this building with all the parts, all the various areas that need to be addressed, the various components of the buildings, the systems that need to be addressed. And in that scenario, we said, okay, we're not bringing in portables. We'll use existing space. We then, and the reason we did that is because portables tend to be very expensive. They're almost, you know, in this case, I'll give you an example. We said, okay, let's print eight portables onto the building. Based on current projects that we have, what we found was that the portables that are posted to the north side.
Don't just say two hundred floors.
And so it's, and that's something that at the end of the day goes away. Right? Because it's not just the buildings themselves that connect those portables to the existing area. Make sure that they're secured, that when students are in there, safety and security is still maintained. Those are all parameters that we have to, you know, that are priorities and must be in play as we, as we renovate the buildings. But in this case, we said, they may be in advantage to having portables because that four-year window for renovation is a long window. So what we did is we said, okay, let's look at what happens if we brought eight portables in. And in this case, what you'll notice is we're able to renovate. So we still moved some students to Hall, but we were able to renovate the two windows of the building while some of the students are in the portables. And then, and then we moved through the process this way and it ended up being a shorter duration. So this is the approach for Center. It also allowed a little bit of overlap in terms of work starting at that Hall. So that was interesting in that by doing that, we were able to expedite the process through Hall as well. And, you know, again, time is money. So when we said, okay, even though we're paying more money for the portables, what is that paying overall? And it, it turned out that the cost of the cleanup is very minimal. So if the process turned, it ended up that the portables would be slightly less expensive than now, than having, when you went through that very staged, phased process renovation. So any approach that we would do would make sense to have things like portables on this, on this side because we shared them and they would, they would actually, they would be located at Center School and remain at Center School and students would just be moved to those locations. So at the end of the day, when we looked at that, that made a lot of sense to, you know, potentially look at just portable classrooms at the building. So when we went through this process, now it gave us some parameters to put budgets to these, to the work that is going to be done because now we knew how many phases there were, how long it was going to take, when work is when you start. And we identified all the construction that needed to happen. And we looked at it in two ways. So the phase default, which was the renovation of those spaces. And then we broke it down into, if we also do that as capital improvement projects. Now, the capital improvement projects would take longer because you would actually break it up into smaller components as we go through it. So you would have to go through several cycles of phased construction on capital improvements. So, but we looked at it and we created some scenarios. And ultimately, what we found is that the construction cost was slightly greater on capital improvement projects. A lot of it coming from the fact that it defers some of the work for later years. So it takes, you know, instead of each of the buildings being done in two years, let's say it may be done in four years or five years. And so that escalation cost, in fact, wasn't to. The other thing is, when you break down the projects into much smaller components, some of it, in fact, a larger portion of it becomes ineligible for reimbursement because it doesn't fall into the criteria that the state has. You know, the state has a renovator's new criteria. And what they want you to do, if you're going to renovate, do it all and get it to that level of completion so you don't keep coming back for it. And that's, and they give you the advantage of doing that is items that are repair items that they, that is normally not reimbursed, come eligible for reimbursement. And your reimbursement rate is sixty-three point six three. Actually, it went up slightly for the next year. So that, you take full advantage of that reimbursement. When you do this, you know, those repair and replacement type items are ineligible for reimbursement. And therefore, when you look at this, this budget here, you'll see that the cost is slightly higher because of the escalation of time. And also, the reimbursement is slightly lower. So the net cost, in this case, for the Center School was fifteen million net, thirty-nine point eight as a total project profit, fifteen one six net for the renovation approach. And then forty-six million for the capital approach, the twenty-six million net. And so that, that was for Center School. We did the same facility for, for Hall. And you can see the, it's a much larger school, it's double the size, the more than double the size of Center School. The renovation approach, you know, holistic approach, was fifty point three eight, with a twenty-four million dollar reimbursement estimate. There are things, there's an item called space standards that I mentioned it earlier on. And it's important because when it comes to Center School, you're within those guidelines. So there's no impact of space standards on the work we're doing at Center School. But in terms of Hall, your population is much smaller than the size of the building. So the space standards do start to impact you because your building is much larger than what you need for the number of students. When I say need, it's really a formula that the state has. It's not based on educational criteria. It's a, it's so many square feet per student. And as long as you're within those square feet per student, you get your full reimbursement. If you go over that, you are, that work is not eligible in essence. So when you, when you look at Hall, that, that factor comes into play. And that's why, you know, it's not simply a straight across in terms of the reimbursement. And you've got on the renovation portion, and even on the renovation portion, so the twenty-four million is reimbursement and the net being twenty-six point three eight. Again, the capital project, those are time and smaller projects and the duration is a higher budget. It's also a lower reimbursement with a net of thirty, thirty-one point seven. In order to, you know, comparing apples to apples, what we did say, so you can seek a waiver of the space standards. It's a process you have to go through to be able to be eligible for, to have a larger building. Many times, the state will approve that. You have to make a case to the state as to why it's important and why, you know, it makes sense for this building. Because your buildings are old and if they're pre-1959, and large portions of your buildings are pre-1959, you get a sort of a credit or an increase in a reimbursable space in terms of space standards. But we're still, we still are above that. So I factored that into the calculations as well. But one could seek a space standard waiver as you go through this process as well. But it's not a guarantee. I mean, many times, we receive the full area for the waiver. Many, other times, you know, it's almost a negotiation process here to make a case. We receive fifty percent of it. So for to not indicate that, oh, we're going to get it definitely, because I don't know that. I'm taking the approach here that they're not, you know, we're not looking at the space standard waiver approved. If it is approved, that number begins to drop. In other words, your, your state reimbursement value goes up and the net cost goes down.
That was a sticking point when, for the vote for the new pre-K through eighth grade building. When it went to the vote, we could not. You apply for your grant after you have local approval. And until you have local approval, your number is your number. So the space standard waiver, you'd find out the answer after you've brought that to a vote in your town. That's something that I've brought to OS EGR and local folks, Tammy, was kind enough to hear us, Tammy Newt, she obviously hears our state route. And trying to change that process because it's, it's a little backwards to me. And I think a lot of people would like to see that number. You'd want to know what you're, you're going to pay for whatever that's going to be prior to going to a vote. And right now, that system remains the same. So you would not have that space standard waiver confirmation or denial until after you voted this town in whatever project. Thank you.
This, this final slide on the budget also is, say, well, what if you built a K through eight building on the Hall side? Just to get another, you know, when you, when you look at a renovator's new project, one of the criteria that the state has is they say you have to compare it to a new facility. And so in order to look at that, and then what the state will do is say, okay, we agree with you, the renovation is cheaper because a lot of this money is coming from the state, that they will then, you know, and that the renovation is cheaper than a new building. So you've made your case that it makes sense to renovate your buildings. So in order to do that, we did look at saying, okay, what if we built a new facility on the Hall side? And what would that cost be? And so we developed these costs for that scenario. And what that does is it takes a lot of things out of play. Like, for instance, we don't need portables. We don't have to spend two million doing that. Reduces the timeline. It improves, you know, the disruption to education in a significant way. By having it on the same site as the ongoing Hall building, it is still, there's going to be some disruption because there's a field. You're going to lose some fields, the contractors are going to be accessing. But we do this and we see this a lot. And you've got two buildings that are being done in a similar fashion. But it gives you a lot of advantages during construction. So, you know, we, we put that scenario together and here. And in this scenario, we just took the space standard that the, the state allows. And so this, this number sixty-five eight sixty-four is you're saying the gross square foot or a K, pre-K through K building. That's what they would approve and would be fully eligible for reimbursement. So in that scenario, we put a budget together and that's at seventy nine point four. It maximizes your reimbursement. Now here, we base this number on the fact that when you build a new building, there's a ten percent factor that comes into play, that it's ten percent. So if your reimbursement rate is sixty-three percent, the reimbursement on a new building is fifty-three percent. And I'll give you some better news on that just in a second. But that's the criteria we used in developing these numbers. And we stayed within the space standards, so there was no penalty for that. The state is now also allowing the same process of making a case for a new building. And if you, you can prove and show them that the new building is actually less expensive than renovating a building, then they would allow you to build a new building at the higher rate. So you wouldn't, you wouldn't have that ten percent penalty. So that's something that would be considered if we, if you want to go in that direction. The second column is really the numbers that were presented at the, at the last project referendum. And that did not, was not approved. And then the third column is, all it's doing is saying, if we were to try to, because that building that was being proposed was seventy-five thousand one hundred and thirty-four square feet. So it was a larger building, which meant that it exceeded the space standards. And therefore, there was a penalty for exceeding the space standards. Now there, you could also apply for a waiver, you know, in that case as well. One of the things that we've been successful with this negotiating, because as a small, as a town with a smaller population, you're hit extra hard because you still have to provide a facility that has a gym. You're not going to downsize your gym or downsize your art garden. You still have to, there's certain basic components of your building, your classrooms, that have to be maintained. And so it's harder to meet those space standards, even though it's, the number varies for small schools and our school. It's not enough variation. So one can make a case for space standards. But in this scenario, we, we assume that that's not the case. And this just used the, the, the penalty for being higher than the space standard in this scenario. So these numbers were put together just to give you a comparison to what happens if you were to then look at a new facility on that, on the existing site or on the old site.
Yeah, the one change that I mentioned in the beginning that will add to this is the, there would be a column that will have the total for both of the net costs to the town of both, you renovated both buildings. And you can get those numbers on a previous slide. It just doesn't show here as a total. And the total for renovation for, for both is forty-two million dollars. That's the net cost of that.
Yeah. Net cost. So it's important to look at it that way as to, if you were to build, you know, a, a new school and compare to that, or renovating both the schools to that level, then there's a significant increase in cost there.
Can you go back to Slide Six for me, Rusty? I just want to share one thing I think is important. It was the Center Base Project spoken narrative. Yeah, that's fine. One thing in the board's discussion when this process was starting, we know the roofs in both buildings need to be completed. And we know that at some point, there'll be, we hope, another HVAC grid. And the board put that forward to QA and M and said, okay, these are our priority projects. Can you help us start to rank other items where other items fit in? And what happened was Rusty came back and said, well, you've got an issue because if you do your roof and you do your HVAC, you also have to do electrical. You have to do your, some exterior work, some interior work. You have to do fire protection because you cross a certain threshold and you have to bring certain items up to code. So.
What's the threshold?
Is it, for instance, on, on your energy, is a two million dollar threshold. The state's giving you two million dollars. They expect you to meet high-performance building standards. And what high-performance building standards, that means that your, your building's got to meet certain efficiency requirements.
And the HVAC would require two million from the state or less?
Yeah, you would get, depending on the total value, yeah, you would begin to exceed that two million dollars.
What that is?
I'm sorry?
We should start with what that number is.
Actually, that number was ten or eleven million dollars at that point.
From the state?
No, no, the project cost was that.
So how much from the state? Because that's what's based on the other additional costs that they're talking about.
I don't have that, no.
We, Linda, we can share that. That was definitely in a recorded board meeting because he brought the numbers just for HVAC. I think we had that as for HVAC and the roof projects.
That was just one, it's one of the schools I, that's not.
Because that's what, because all this other stuff you're saying needs to get done because of it. So we should start with that number, but maybe some of the bridges.
I think, I think my point is. I think the, the point of my comment though, is that the roof for this, it is, the, the two million dollars, is that a prior to reimbursement total cost project?
No, that's when, if the state is, is.
Their cost?
Their cost is.
Okay. So you've got, if you had a fifty percent reimbursement and you had a four million dollar project, the roof here, the project prior to reimbursement, I think, was like one point four, if I remember correctly, one point four million. So as soon as you cross that four million dollar range, which HVAC would, for this building and Center, both absolutely cross that number, you then had to do other things. And this is why he tried to lump these things together to say, it's either you. And this is why he tried to lump these things together to say, it's either you do a roof, do the, you submit for that and that's it. And then you can do an application in center and whole or split, so there's separate applications. If you do the HVAC, you'd have to keep it under the $4 million number and we were nowhere near that.
But the HVAC then triggers things like you're going to replace the windows. You're, you're not going to leave those windows alone. These are single pane windows that are not functioning.
Or it does not need all that, that you.
But it would make sense to do it at the same time because.
You have to do all the other work, it's going to be more.
Linda, you were here at the beginning, we were going to hold questions till the end. So if you could, if you want to wait one second, I just want to make sure we get through everything and we'll open it up. Anything else you want to share as far as, I, I just want to make sure that people understood why that narrative got so long and it wasn't just a roof and HVAC. It's because it expanded quickly and I think the board was surprised by that. Anything else for sharing presentation? Do you want, we can kind of take this down and just to do the room, are you okay with that?
Sure.
All right, sure, all right, I'm just.
If we need to refer back to.
We can, I can, I can share it too. I didn't hear that part. Okay, so. Yeah, did you want the numbers for that? We can make sure that's posted. The numbers they're looking for, the numbers that were in the initial project for, that included the HVAC.
So the numbers were 11 point, about 11.8 and about 6 million to do just those components.
Eleven point six for hall school, correct?
Eleven point seven, seven.
Eleven point seven, seven million for hall school HVAC only?
And five point nine. So this is, no, it's, and these projects were developed to see, it included the roof.
Okay.
It included the HVAC system. It included all the things that were connected. You have to address the sprinkler systems at that time because the state wants you to make your building safe. You start doing a major project, you have to make the, like you put a sprinkler system in the building. Sprinkler systems are a basic element of any piece of safety in a building. And you then have to do the ceilings in the building because you can't, because you put the sprinkler system and you're not doing ceilings. There was work related to, you know, some of the, the electrical requirements is out. So that, that list is out there.
Can we open up the questions? I, I don't know if you want to offer, if any board members want to send anything comments before we go. Nice part. So what I'll do, we'll start in the room and we'll get through the questions in the room and then we'll open it up online. And basically what you'll do is if you have a question online, you'll be able to raise your hand and we'll, we'll unmute you. If, if you have a question in the room, just say your name. I don't think we really need your address, but say your name so it's loud enough. If you can stand, it's much easier and we'll answer the questions as best we can. And I saw a couple note cards go out, so if you want us to grab those, we'd be glad to do those too. Go ahead, Peter, I was waiting for you.
Peter Volten, which is ninety-seven, thank you Rusty for that thorough presentation. My question is, thinking about what you're sharing with us in terms of space, state potential penalties, if there aren't waivers, and maximizing that reimbursement for all these upgrades, would it make sense to leverage all the space here at Hall School by moving out of center? If we had the entire K eight in this building where it assumes to be abundant space, could we maximize our renovation dollars and almost mimic a new school in this facility at this site?
So I believe that was part of the last study that was, that was done where we had.
Probably even familiar.
And the K eight was at, at, at Hall. And we had developed very, various options as to how we could do that.
I think one of the issues that came up was fire code. That placing this pre-K, K one students in this building, fire code, they have to have access to all the items. And to get from this building to have access to the nurse's office and the office to the gym is three floors. They have to have their own stairs and just looking at the space lines, that was one of the biggest issues with fire code.
And that, and that scenario, we, we had to put some additions on the building to, to comply with all the codes. So it's not that you've got 60,000 square feet here that you can just use that 60,000 square feet to, to do what you're trying to accomplish. In order to do that, we had to, to look at ways of making sure that pre-K through one were on grade level, which is a requirement, that's, that the program spaces that they use are accessible to them without being on a level that's beyond the level of exit discharge. So we addressed all of those issues in that, in that report and in that concept. And I think the numbers were, but back then were pretty similar to some of the, the numbers we're seeing here. You know, we'd have to escalate that because it was two years ago. And I don't, and you know, look at how we accomplished it.
Thank you. Rob Tullis, I'm looking at your pre-K to eight high enrollment number, four thirty-one for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. When looking back at the Proudie study that was done for the SBC, we don't have that one.
I think that is the one.
No, it is not. It's much higher.
What's much higher?
What you're stating now. We never hit the projections of the Proudie study.
The actuals are not what the state is going to look at. The state is going to look at your, am I wrong?
Project maximum over the next 10 years.
Correct.
Okay, but we have a track record of not hitting projections, of coming in much less than projections. What, what is our current enrollment now in both schools?
About 400, 391 maybe?
Really?
Yeah. Both whole schools? Yes, three, 391? I missed my opinion. Oh, it's a, yes, it's 391 or four, around 391, 400, 391 stuck in my head.
So how do we get the 431 in, in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six?
That's off the projected enrollment that is from the, the study. That's what the state, you are required to do a study.
So have we done a new study?
No, we don't have a project.
So proud, are we going off a Proudie study for the SBC, which doesn't match the 431? For twenty-five, twenty-six, Proudie study was 405.
It was a, I think NASDAQ report that had the 431 might be used.
Either that or we're looking at the wrong dates in Proudie study.
You could be right. So ultimately, if I'm advising you, I'd say if you're looking at a project with the state, you want to go with the highest, the highest enrollment. And, and the reason, the reason behind it is the higher the number, the more square footage you're eligible for. So the less penalty you have if you exceed that number. So it's to the advantage to use the highest projection.
So we're playing games with the numbers so that we keep the state happy?
No, we're, we're abiding by their rules. They say you have to give us a projection, you know, a demographer who does the analysis. They give you the projections and that's what the, that it represents to the state.
When I looked at the numbers on page five of Proudie study, twenty twenty-five was 405. So I don't, I don't know where that, I don't understand where the 431 came from. The thing is, population projections are optimistic, they're not realistic. The Wilmington, Wilmington's population is going to go downward. There is no major subdivisions in the pipeline for the town. The potential is there, but the construction industry is not favorable to building major subdivisions. I don't see a population increase happening in a town in Wilmington for quite a few years at all. People are not having as many kids. Student population is not going to grow as fast. So I question the, the numbers we're using in sizing the building, which in turn is driving the cost to the taxpayer and to the state of Connecticut. And I'm just not comfortable with that.
Do you have data that proves that the Wilmington population is going to go down? Like do you have?
I can't hear you.
Do you have data to support that where we're going, population is going down?
I'm not with me, but I do have backup data for that.
Other questions for Rusty? I'm going to go online, oh, sorry, yes.
I have time for the seventy's in town, a batch of two questions. One is, when moving the 43, their party at center, I believe?
Correct.
Moving them permanently to Hall School, would that have a favorable impact on the, the square footage calculation at Hall School and not have a negative impact on center?
I think it'd have a favorable impact at Hall, but it would have a negative impact at, at center because now you're a normal bear. Is it, you know, right, you're right on the cost there, you're meeting that criteria. So it hurts you when Aaron helps you, no?
And then the next question, when you're talking about the HVAC system, are you talking about one system, like a central air, central heat system for the whole building? Or the individual units for each room? It just seems a lot of people's homes are in large, large buildings, but.
Right, you, you're moving away from, if you wouldn't have unit, you know, unit evaders or you wouldn't have like individual air conditioners. You'd have a rooftop system that would cover a certain amount of rooms. They're, that would all be designed so that it's a comprehensive system that is controlled in a way that it identifies when energy is needed, when it's not needed. It recycles, you know, air to capture heat. So it's, it's an energy efficient system that's efficiently controlled. Typically, that's what you see in most schools now.
Pat Tullis, 119 River Road, second to last slide. You have a new, new pre-K to eight hall site. Very detailed on this, could use plenty of people to elaborate on where you got the towers?
Those are numbers extrapolated based on square footage of the building. So we do a lot of buildings and we have a square foot data and that's how we develop. But we did not develop a specific plan. But the idea is if you were to go in the direction of a, a new facility, you would need to do that evaluation and come up with a plan to say if that's the direction we're going, you would also then develop a concept that says, how would you build it there? Where would you put it? Because there's a lot of detail that would need to be added to.
Okay, so when you say new center, are you talking about big demolitions, existing facilities?
So in that, in that scenario, what would happen is you would, because the site is limited here, you still need fields, et cetera. So in that scenario, you would build in the fields, for instance, as one example. And then while the school's operating, and then you would remove this building and, and create the, the need, space needed for skills, et cetera. So that's one scenario. We're just, we're just trying to come up with different ideas, you know, out, that, that, and that's done a lot. We're doing many schools where we're removing the existing building, but we're using it while the construction going on, build a new school and then remove the existing building and the, the, the site functions over there.
Linda, mine on that, I want to know the square foot of the roof at Hall and the square foot of the roof at Center.
So you.
Square footage.
She's asking about the square foot amount for the roof at Center and the square foot amount for.
I don't have it off the top of my head. I mean, it's, it's, it's something that we, you know, recalculated and it's, it's in, in the spreadsheet, et cetera.
And you, you don't have a pricing for this either, square footage, so.
I don't have the, the retail breakout, we can get it for you very easily.
Okay.
I mean, typically roofs that, you know, are, are running somewhere between $35 and $40 a square foot. So.
Or you don't know the square footage of the.
I, I don't know it off the top of my head.
It's a little high, I don't like removing it on my mind.
But remember, when you, when you do with, I, I'm basing it on estimates that we receive, the projects that are ongoing and that are getting ready to go out to bid or are just bid. So that's where my data is coming from. And, and in this case, keep in mind, you have to escalate the cost because let's say you decide, found the sites to, to do a project and file a ground application at the end, in June of twenty twenty-five. By the time you start construction, it's, it's several years. And then usually you, you estimate to the mid-point of construction. That's not my formula, that's what estimators do. I'm just letting you know that that's how.
And I know the skylights is mentioned, I know this building has skylights, the center school has skylights?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, it will. Wouldn't it be less costly to just, when you're replacing them, when you're doing the regen one, to start, to not have the skylights, just have the roof? And then it wouldn't leak themselves? I mean, skylights are referred to, problems issued leaking.
Depends on how they're constructed, but yeah, you could, you could, that's a scenario that could be less bad.
You didn't price it out to see what should be less?
No, we're trying to put a big picture together here, we're not, we're not into that level of detail. If you were to say that you were doing a, a new roof project and you wanted to get into the, the mid degree of that, then that's when we would look at that. This is a, a study.
Two.
Tammy, you go, state route. From the perspective of the roofs and such, though, also, don't you have to, do you have to take into consideration, this is state money, so do you have to be per valid wage? Which would mean it would be, that has to order to the federal, so.
If you use, you have to apply the CHRO and have to spend your per valid wage.
So that could be an indicator of why it would be higher than.
Right.
Yep. Last question, I'll move online, Steph.
Steph Summers, Four Boy Road. Yeah, I just wanted to ask if you could put in context what your projection is for, and that it may be a range because there's several scenarios here of square footage costs for, for consolidating the schools in the renovation. And if you could tell, tell, tell us what goes into that. I, I've seen some communications online that sort of say, or, you know, in town, that project, that the, the figure that you're starting with, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, is significantly higher than, say, the average standard in the, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts right now.
So when I look at it, I use criteria from current projects that were, one, that actually, that just bid. Received the bid results, I think it was yesterday that the bid results came in. Another one, which is just been estimated after a concept design phase. And, you know, just to be quite open with you, not too long ago, we were looking at, you know, construction costs in the 700, 800 dollars a square foot. And these estimates are coming in at 900 to over a thousand dollars a square foot. And now take that into consideration, that we're looking at numbers that have been projected out for three years, beyond now, the estimates that we're looking at now. So, you know, you have to use some kind of escalation factor, the escalation factor we use is high percentage.
So it's all related to the construction, the industry growth and square footage cost, that is going that, up that quickly?
I was, we had a project that, you know, was, was positive by, by the company and, and then six months later, it went up significantly. And we were questioning that and basically we were told it was a function of labor, that labor is done up significantly. There's a lot of work happening in Massachusetts and New York. The labor force is, is hard, you know, it's tough to get construction workers. And, and that's what they have seen. Now, having said that, that particular project came in slightly under budget. But it was still, and it got escalated 15%. You know, before that labor came in, five percent or so under budget. But there was a 15% escalation factor made in six months. So these aren't my numbers. These are just using numbers that are projects that we have seen the actual estimates that are done by professional cost estimators and construction managers.
So I just want to, so if it's, if it's going up, for instance, $1,000 a square foot or around there, that's, that's a 50% increase?
So the 15% increase I was talking about just on labor, on that particular project?
Just on labor, but the overall cost because of product and everything else is going up as much as 50%?
I wouldn't say 50%, but it's starting to.
Well, if it's seven, didn't you say it was like 750 now, 700 now?
So right now, the, the project that just was, it was close to $900 a square foot.
Okay.
And these projects, and that's a new building, which is, you know, but it does have the demolition of an existing building as well. So the numbers we're seeing projected for the future now are in the thousands.
Gotcha. Thank you.
John Tahan, you're online. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Thanks, Phil. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, I see us in this proposal spending millions of dollars on HVAC equipment that includes new gas boilers. I wonder if you looked at geothermal heating and cooling coupled with solar power for any of this? Geothermal heating and cooling and the solar power itself would all qualify for a Renewable Energy for America program, grant, that could be up to 50% of the costs. On top of that, there's a 30% federal tax credit that's now available to municipalities through the Inflation Reduction Act that was signed into law last year. I think with, with those incentives, we might actually save a considerable amount of money installing geothermal and solar instead of gas boilers. And then on a cost to purchase versus cost to own argument, the cost of owning a gas boiler is high because you have to buy gas to fuel it. And the price of gas does nothing but go up. I wonder if you took any kind of a look at that at all? If you haven't, I would appreciate getting another look.
So we have not evaluated geothermal or solar for, for these buildings. They are, you're right, there are a lot of incentives. The initial costs are higher from our experience. I had geothermal and solar in my house, so I'm totally a believer in renewable energy. But the reality is, in, in all the projects that we're involved with, that we're using renewable energy, there's enough charge in the initial cost. We have to look at the lifecycle costs. And I think from that perspective, it's favorable. But at this point, we have not gone to that, at that extent.
Mary Garrett, online. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, Mary Garrett. I am the candidate for the 35th District Senate seat. And I had a few questions. One is while construction is occurring, we know there could be unknowns, such as asbestos, lead, paint, especially in these older buildings, exposed mold that's encapsulated right now. Are there contingency plans for that? And that, of course, removal or abatement would increase the cost of the project? So are there, is there any money in this plan for unforeseen situations?
Yes, we have, not only included construction contingency and owners' contingency, we also have design contingencies. And we have values for hazmat abatement during demolition included in the budget.
And also, as far as timelines go, I've had, I've worked like with my father in construction as just helping him out. And many times, there are timelines that are not met or deadlines. Is there a penalty for you if you don't meet those timelines?
At this point, we're just going by, you know, what would happen is if you approved a project, you retain a construction manager, I assume because of the size of these projects. And the construction manager would be managing the projects. And then the town would determine if he wanted to put the daily damages on the contractors if they did not complete it in the timeframe that was defined.
Nick, I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
It's Nick Della. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So I do agree with some of the comments that Ralph had stated earlier. I think we, I would caution on the optimistic student growth. Just if you look at studies from Forbes, Washington Post, and various other organizations, you know, as far as homeschooling, private schools, more families are going that way and it's been increasing. So you have that. You also have Americans having kids. I think it's about a 1.6%, a 1.6 kids per family, which is not keeping population, you know, growth and such. So you do have some factors that I think we need to consider long term as far as population growth. Now, what is driving, I had two more points here. What is driving the number of classrooms required? I remember during the budget discussion, the way our district, the way our district has, the classroom sizes, in my opinion, is not the most efficient compared to, my kids go to St. James and they do it much more efficiently. I know our classroom sizes, when broken down on the Willington Public Schools, they're saying 13, 14, and, you know, low numbers. Is there a way to maybe cut off a classroom instead of three, maybe two, right? And still have 20 kids per classroom, which is acceptable according to the president of the CTEA Association there? Is there a way to do that? And then, I know, what are, so what are the complications that come? I think we kind of saw this happen with the roof, right? We started doing the roof and then, then we weren't able to do the roof because new school. You know, we all know the headaches that came from that. What are the complications that come if we start doing the repairs? And then we find out we can get a new school? Like, I know Michelle Cook, 87% for Torgington High School. Say Tammy can get us an 80% for a new school. What are the ramifications of that potentially coming down the pipeline? If that was to happen? Because I definitely see the new school conversation coming back.
Nick, can you just clarify your timeline for us? Are you talking about a reno or a new for your 80% question?
I'm sorry, can you say that?
So when you're talking about, if Tammy Nuccio could work some magic and get an 80% reimbursement rate? Are you talking about on a renovation project? Renovation projects or on a new school?
I get, I ultimately on, on both, right? But my, but my concern is, say, say we go into this, this project of renovating the schools, right? And somehow Tammy next year or next 12 months here finds out, hey, I can get you 80% plus for a new school consolidating and such like that. Economically, it probably makes sense for the town to go that path. But what are the complications if we already put the shovel in the ground for renovations? And then we find out we can get that high percent for a new school? Is that a little bit more clear?
Yeah, yes. So, and I'll give the example to Rusty, and I think this is what you're referring to. So one thing, when Office of School Construction canceled our roof project, they did so because we had a building committee considering a new building. If we were to apply the first seven days, 10 days of next month for a new roof project, and it started to move, we were told by the Office of School Construction that typically, most of the bond would be, their bond, would be paid by 10 years. But there's a chance if you were to vacate that building earlier than those 10 years, that you would have to pay it back. So realistically, you would, could be paying back a portion of whatever those projects are that the state had a hand in, that they gave you money for. And then you're also paying for the projects moving forward. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. We have had some communities where they've done a project because the work had to be done. And, but ultimately, the, the solution for that particular school was to build a new school. They got the funding for the new school, but there was some penalties for the roof that wasn't sold.
Wasn't sold. One more online, and then we'll come back in the room. Andy, oh, sorry.
Nick, hi, Tammy. Yeah, so that's, that's one of the, the problems here. I think at this point, the town really needs to decide because you can't do parallel tracks, right? Right now, if we start going down the, the road of doing the roof replacement, which would lead to the, you know, if we do the HVAC at the same time and all the other stuff, once you start doing that, if a new school comes up, you do get stuck into the payback, right? The state's not going to just give you money to try a project and then build a new building, right? So I, I think we have to pursue looking at the project. If you're looking at a roofing project, start the paperwork and all of that for that. But the town really needs to decide if the new school is an option. And then, you know, you put me and Jeff to work and we do what we can to get a higher rate, right? I've, I've already started having conversations about what that would look like and how we would do that. But you can't do both unless you intend to pay the state back. And for a roof, I believe, it's if you start new project over 20 years. It's over the life of the roof. So the roof is actually a 20-year roof. So if you get a bond to do the roof and you start doing that work, and then we get a miracle and get an 80% reimbursement rate for a new school, you get that money, but you have to pay back the full cost of the roof project because you're no longer utilizing it. So the town would have to kind of double dip in that, in that case. And that's not always a great solution for a small town like Willington. So I think there needs to be kind of conversations on how long you can wait, what you're looking at, and how much time we have to try to pursue what options we can to state.
And I think that's a big part of why the board did this work, was to figure out what's the palette in this town? What, what is the number? Because the number really does dictate what you can do. If it's $2 million, you know what you're doing. If it's not, if it's more than that, and you can pay a bond over a period of time with the money that was put into CIP, where does that bring you? And I think it doesn't make sense. And this is, I think, what the board is looking for feedback on. There's some ideas here, but we need some feedback. They need some feedback on how do we lump these projects together? Is it a, do you just do one school? Do you do both schools? Is it, pick a, pick a project at a time? I, and I dare say, you're going to waste money. But you're going to waste money when you pick a project off at a time over the, the period of, of the, you know, all the projects. It's going to cost you a lot more in the end. And Rusty's research shows that. It's just a question of what can we do to maximize our dollars? You know, my job is to say, I don't want disruption in the buildings. I will advocate for that. But there are ways to do it and minimize disruption, which is the work that Rusty and I sat in, the mapping that was done to seal off sections of a building, to allow renovation to occur and to move kids one time. Those are the things that we're really trying to process. And do families agree with that? If families don't agree with that, the Board of Ed wants to hear that. Because then that comes off of the list of things that really should be considered and what their recommendations are. And they need quick recommendations to this, to CIP, to figure out where we're going. It might be here, Stato, I don't know. But Andy, I see you on, online. I'm gonna ask you to unmute.
Hi, I'm Nick Marco. I'm Andy's brother. I'm also the tax clerk.
Um, Nick, thank you. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
My question about contingency, the original.
Anybody get it? I think you just, no, hey, Nick, we can still hear you. I think you said your name was Nick Marco. But you were breaking up. Can you try a question again for us?
In your list of, the original budget that you showed that had a list of activities, and then at the bottom, there was a lump sum number.
Nick, we're losing you again.
I don't know why.
Yeah, I can see our boards, and we look good, so. If you want to wait, I'll come back to you and we can try it again. I'm just gonna put you back on mute and then we'll, we'll come back in a bit.
Ask them for this question in chat.
I don't have the chat open. Did you have your hand up first in the room?
I. You, you like Nucum?
Yep.
Going to the probability, how many of these analyses has your company done that resulted in reno instead of being built? I mean, does it ever fall in that direction? And if so, what would be the determining factors? And I just want, while I can say it, demolish, building another school and demolishing this would not be an option since the school, the town does not own this building. It's not an option.
Yes, I agree with that.
So, anyway.
What was the first part of your question?
How many analyses has the company done that resulted in renos instead of being built? And what would be determining factors that would sort of push that decision?
So the majority of the projects that do lie end up in renovations. And the determining factors, and it's changed over time. And determining factors tends to be a number, a number of factors. One is disruption to education. A big factor is, is the cost of the new construction versus the renovation. And then the state weighs in on this as well. So all of this is evaluated. It just doesn't, it's not a decision that we make. It's a decision that we provide you with the data. You make it, you as a town, maybe makes the determination which, which one you favor with the state, and the state will agree because they're, they're putting a lot of funds in there. But they generally go along with the community. But there are times when, for instance, if you were to pick a renovation project, and a renovation project is going to be more expensive than building a new project, the state's going to weigh in on that. In fact, we used to have a process where it worked in the opposite direction. It's that, you know, 10% reduction in reimbursement for new building versus a renovation building. So they're not probably going to say you can't put a renovation project together, but your reimbursement is a factor.
Can I just comment, I just want to comment on the Hall School teardown comment. One piece that's not been considered, and this is not in his plan, if you did build a building that was next to it, there have been conversations about retaining certain sections of this building as part of that process. It's not in his plan. But that could be something that the Hall Foundation would be considering that could be pitched to them. So you have a wing that is from 1980 and you have a wing that's from 1980 going this way, right? So there's sections that you could totally remove and bring this building back into its almost original state, but connect to a new building. And that could be part of your process. It's just a matter of figuring out, again, what's the palette? Is, would the Hall Foundation support that? That matters, right? I, I think in Rusty's plan, just trying to put something different out there and give you a number to show that, what is this? Because in the number he has, 63,000 square feet, doesn't match our head spec either. That could happen, would have to be looked at as well. But it's just giving you a different picture of something that has not been proposed.
Would that not impact the, like, the field space, the outdoor space, though?
It would, and you'd have to look at, is there, are there different things that you could do? And I've said that from the get-go. You're never, if you do all this, do. You're never, if you do all the students in this building, you're you're boxed in. You've got the river, you've got the swamp and the storage units, you've got Route 32, and you've got the neighbors. So you can't go any direction. So you will always be limited. And I struggled to agree with the process early on about can you really fit a softball field, a baseball field, and a soccer field in this in this location? And I don't think the answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, Governor Peterson. I just had a question on your Hall phase budget. So there was a co-project cost of 50.38, and then I spent a state reimbursement of $24 million. So I'm just trying to understand where the $24 million came from. Is that a judge?
You're correct. So and this gets back, and I can answer this for you because this is one that I actually know. This is part of the penalty. This is a 63,000 square foot building, 200 kids in. And there's a penalty because of the size of the building. You might get full reimbursement on, I'm going to throw a number, 40,000 for middle school.
Well, actually, we calculated it was 44,000.
Oh, there you go. So you that's where the number where you would maximize your reimbursement. And so because of the penalty, it's not the exact percentage of the total cost of the project.
Now, that's an area where you could get a state standard rate or to say you've got an existing building. You should be penalized to renovate that building and make the case. In that case, you would be able to use the higher number of reimbursement.
Okay, I wanted to come back to Andy. If you, Andy, if you want, do you still have a question? If you want to raise your hand online? I know, he's under Andy, Nick. It was the Andy under Nick. Do you want to raise your hand again? We can try again. He's going for it. All right, you are unmuted. Let's try that again.
Okay, yeah, just raise your hand. We'll give up, try again some other way. But my my question was on the budget. Editing the construction costs, there were two 7.5% contingencies and there was a 5% escalation. And it seems like there is, at the bottom of that, there was a Wellington contingency of 7.5%, which seemed to be contingency. I think overall, it comes to around 30%. So if those are reflected in the bottom line total,
All right, we lost you again, but I think I got your point. So he's asking if I understand you correctly. Got it?
So in the estimate, we use 7.5% for design and estimating contingency, which is actually probably low for what an estimator, they would typically start at 10% on design and estimating contingency. Construction, the escalation is just a factor that we've got. The construction contingency is used during construction for construction-related, I agree. You know, these are old buildings. Once you open them up, we don't really know all the details of what we're going to encounter. And the state wants you to carry contingency. They don't want you coming back to them and saying, oh, guess what? We ran out of money. We need to be so the reality is we have to be conservative in these numbers. At this point, we don't want to go aggressive because we've got renovations. The building is being renovated, and we need to to use the dollar value and percentages at a standard. And finally, 7.5% is is again an owner's contingency for, you know, again, unforeseen conditions. What happens when you do a construction, a construction manager project, there's a construction manager carries a contingency as well because you have to look at a project that has construction manager at risk. So the construction manager carries a contingency, and then the owner has to carry a contingency. In fact, recently, the state's been telling us that these numbers need to be closer to 10% of respective owner's contingency. Now, you know, these numbers where we're that are carrying at 7.5% are pretty standard.
I think the real question there, though, is are those percentages included in your bottom line numbers on that page? I think that's what the real question was.
Yes, that's all included.
Okay. Can I jump back to energy for a moment? You're talking about gas-fired boilers. Where's the gas coming from?
Like, you know, in this particular case, I don't, I think we're looking at probably oil in this case.
So it's not going to be gas-fired?
It's not going to be gas-fired. Gas-fired more energy efficiency, I think, and that's.
Understood. But there's no natural gas lines close. I think the Yukon may be served by a natural gas line, but Wellington is not. So it's going to have to be, if it's we're talking gas, it's going to be programmed, which is going to be outrageously unstable price-wise.
And the engineer might have anticipated doing that, but we did have our engineer. And if it has to be oil, then it's going to be after year. But these are, again, a level of detail that's the next step. When you know, when you go into an actual project, all this will get evaluated at a more detailed level.
Steph Summers for Wyron. My questions, I mean, it could be for Rusty, but it gets more for for Phil on the school board. All of this is, if I understand the context, none of it addresses any ed specs at all, which, of course, the K-38 process did address. What we want for, you know, for an investment in education in the town, both the structure of the building and the learning process. Is it, do I have that right? And if so, when do ed specs or that that part of the school experience for kids in town come in? When does that come into play? Because this is a lot of money that we're talking about in a renovation if it doesn't address any of those issues. And I guess I want to know, what's the board discussion been about that? How do they feel about that? And and where are we with that? Because it just seems like the big, I don't know if I'd call it the elephant in the room. I would call it the hole in the plan, maybe, as far as this this level of investments.
I could I could just talk to the capital improvement projects that simply that capital improvements for not enhancing anything. If you do renovate this new, there may be some opportunities in there to meet ed spec. But the program of 75,000 square feet is not is not addressed in these projects.
Meaning, if we can't, we can't aspire to that larger square footage that would address?
Oh, you could. And the budget, so you'd have to go in the direction of that third column where you're going to pay more for that 75,000 square feet.
You're not moving walls. You're not making classrooms larger. You're not changing anything based upon the education specifications. You're simply fixing items. That's all you're doing. There might be a benefit for some, but it's just probably a little bit of a lock. It's hitting an ed spec item.
Can I give the board members perspective? Number one, I think we're taking the existing space and design and just fixing it, fixing the problem. So we're really not moving into 21st century education beyond just fixing problems in the building. The other thing is, the number that we had for our brand-new school included all new furniture, all new kitchen, all new appliances. That I do not believe is included in the renovation. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and I also think there's going to be quite a bit of discrepancy between what is reimbursed and what is not reimbursed. So my understanding.
Right, that's not like furniture and stuff like that is not reimbursed. Kitchen stuff, it's not furniture. Stuff like that is 100% on the town's bill. How about you?
It's just that when we were designing, I was my understanding that it would be furnished.
It was required that we have everything new. If we were building all everything new, all of the interior furniture, et cetera, had to be new. That was a requirement.
Right, but it's not covered. That's not part of the reimbursement stuff.
Is it? Yeah. Thank you. Yes, it's required, and we're not helping.
Yeah, it's.
No furniture.
But I do think you can you can reuse. I know when they did Birch Grove, there was a lot that was reused. But it's not like I don't think all of that falls under the whole state. Like, it's it depends on the age. There's a lot of stuff that goes in. There's a lot of stuff that goes into it.
In new facilities, we do get reimbursement furniture.
Right, relationships definitely will not.
Exactly. That was my point, is that if we built, we would get all of that included. Whereas with, there's no furniture. And to me, the costs are very similar. When I added up figures, they were within 10,000 or 10 million each other. But so that's my personal opinion. Thank you.
I I think, I guess, to put to put a direct point on it, the term renovation to new is a little misleading to the average towns person. Because if you're talking about education and and school and the, you know, the functions of the building beyond mortar and bricks, it's it's not really renovating to new. Maybe renovating to new to its original timeframe.
So in many projects, a renovator you can enhance and meet educational criteria. I believe in this particular scenario, we were asked just to look at it as a capital improvement. So that's why it's it's budgeted the way it is. If you chose to then say, no, we want to meet some of the educational criteria, we would have to see what the impact is and then evaluate it.
Thank you.
Is there like for the fire protection?
Say your name.
Oh, sorry, Jeremy, Parker Road. For the, is there infrastructure place that let's say Center School or the street for the fire protection to come in? Or does that do a lot of wells or pumps?
Wherever possible, it would be.
But is there services up there?
There's water. There's water. Water is water in school.
Yeah.
It was taken on pump a while ago. I just note as well, I don't remember we have the capacity for fire. They have to measure that. Yeah, you have to put it, so we don't know.
We don't know at this point because it's still early to the concept.
Yeah, can I just go back to Steph's question about the ed specs? So within the last three years, the Board of Education at the time spent a lot of time talking about the ed. That means, for those of you who don't know, what kind of requirements are needed for our students as far as classroom space and facilities within the classroom space? And we haven't looked at those recently with the new board that, I guess, we're not really that new anymore. But the board that currently stands, that's definitely something on our radar that we know is important and we need to address at some point. But as Rusty said, the goal was really just looking at the CIP projects and looking at more of the fix rather than like an improvement for our program. When we were looking at the ed specs, we all recognized that we are trying to help our children in the current times. We're trying to provide them with the best programming, the best space, the best that they can have. We know they're going on to high school careers, whether it be in a trade or in more of an academic setting or whatever you choose to do. You need to be able to be competitive. You need to have confidence, and you need to have those basic skills so that you feel that you can be successful and more that you know how to ask for help when it's needed. So one of the things I always think about when we talk about the ed specs and preparing students for further education is the science labs for our middle schools. There are very specific recommendations in this current time for students to have access to so that they can do the lab sort of learning that they need to build that background knowledge to go forward in their science learning in high school and beyond. So that was something that we talked about when we did the ed specs, was how could we provide that to the Wellington students? And what's different between what we have now and what we would like it to be for them? And there was a pretty big difference that also added, came along to our conversation about the middle school model and having children changing their classes and differentiating learning based on what they need. They do that very well here at high school as a middle school. But there were ways to make it work smoothly and better for our students and get them the, let's say, more individualized attention and opportunity, which in turn would improve our test scores and help them be more successful in a variety of ways. So all those conversations kind of revolved around the ed specs that we were trying to build. Those still stand now. We have not looked at them recently. But your question was, has that been considered here? And the answer is no. This is not reflective of the ed spec idea.
I just want to get, there's Mary, you're back with your hand up. I'm going to unmute you.
So in regards to in regards to the work that would be done if the decision was to refurbish these buildings, are there warranties or guarantees on the work if there's damage that's a result of it? Or let's say, three years down the line, there is something that comes up as a result? Because when you're dealing with older buildings, that's a common thing. It happens.
So any project that would take place would follow the normal standard, the warranties that you would have on on projects. For instance, if the windows are typically a 10-year warranty, that's what you would get on the renovation projects as well. So the standard warranties would apply to any work that's done under this project.
Last call online? In the room?
My name is Spencer Sonberg. I have a question for you. So have you toured both buildings? Yes. Okay, so in your professional opinion, just with the current status of both outdated buildings with the exteriors and the interiors and the deterioration that has happened in over 100 years in this part of the building and 50 years in the other parts, in your professional opinion, could these buildings impact the learning environment and future generations of Wellington students that might come through the public school system?
So, you know, there, just because a building is old doesn't mean you can't work with it, right?
That's right.
And one of the issues that we looked at here is, in any renovation, this new project that we would do, we'd have to certify that the building is structurally sound and can meet all the criteria of a new building. So if you chose, or the town chose to go down that path, that would have to be done. And and actually, we had engineers look at these buildings. You know, the fact is, education changes and how it's, you know, how 21st century learning is different from, you know, 20 years ago. We used to have open classrooms, and they'd have all the different, these approaches. I mean, these buildings are not the best layout for a school because they evolved over time. And let's face it, that's what happens with buildings that have been added to over time. And there are certain constraints. And so what we have to do is, if you decide to renovate a building and meet your educational criteria, you may have to do more surgery, so to speak, to make it right to meet the 20th century, 21st century learning or future learning environment.
I just want to close with the opportunity for the board members. If you want to say something.
I can just want to take an opportunity to thank representatives from the Board of Finance. And I saw our first selectman here also. So thank you for coming. So if you could represent your group, we appreciate it.
CIP as well.
Yes, CIP, thank you.
And Tammy, thank you for coming. Very nice, Greg.
Jeff Warren is on the call as well. Listen, I think this is, and that was, thanks for saying that. That was kind of my closure as well. Obviously, thank you, Rusty, with your team at QA on architecture. Our step now is to take what we have for information with the community and figure out what's next. I think this first step conversation for us and moving forward. This has been months in the in the hopper here for us. We finally got some presentation out. This will be out. This takes our our local reps, our senators. It takes our selectmen, it takes our Board of Finance, it takes our CIP committee. Most importantly, it takes our community. And we need feedback. I think the biggest elephant for all of us was when the the school project failed, no one could answer why. Our assumption is too expensive, but we don't know why. And we need community feedback on how to take what we have now in this. on how to take what we have now in this report and move forward and get some repairs done in the buildings or make a different decision. But that takes community feedback. We sent out invites to every committee and thanks for those folks showing up. You know, I think we're all in this together. People may have different view, differing views on how to accomplish the, the end, but we've got to get there somehow, whatever that end is. Because in the end, it's about our kids and making sure whatever we can afford, we're doing the best for our kids and, and their education. That's, that's really the biggest piece for me. I think, you know, we'll continue, you know, write your legislators, write your state reps, write your senators, let them know your feelings. And if there's any questions that you think of moving forward that you can share, my email is pstephens@willingtonct.org. I encourage you to email me. I will share all of those emails with the board. And we will be probably talking about this again at our, our November Board of Education meeting, just as, as we've had a chance to process and where to go. So if you have feedback moving forward, I appreciate that and we can do that. You do need to make a motion to adjourn and you do have enough to do it. And it is 8:54. Motion was by Arthur Christensen, seconded by John Mitchell. All in favor?
8:54.
8:54. Thanks all for coming. We apologize.